Good evening, everybody. This is the regularly scheduled meeting of the South Haven City Council for Monday, January the 6th, 2020. So prior to the meeting beginning, we'll have a swearing in, but we're first going to have an invocation by the Reverend Travis Wilson of the Peace Lutheran Church. Good evening, Travis.
Good evening. Happy New Year.
You too.
Thank you. Lots of pride. Gracious God, we give you thanks for this night. We give you thanks for this new year and the opportunities that are ahead of us in it. We ask your blessings tonight upon the swearing in of our official officers and council members and mayor. We ask your blessings upon our city personnel and all of our emergency workers, and we ask your blessings upon us as we enter into this new year, ready for the opportunities that you have lay ahead of us. Bless the agenda tonight and all those who will speak and all those who will comment and all those who will listen. In your name we pray.
Amen.
Amen. Thank you for taking the time to be here tonight. All right. We are now going to swear in our newly elected council members.
So we'll start by having the three city council reps. Have you stand and raise your right hand? Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of City Council Representative of the City of South Haven, Michigan, according to the best of your ability?
I love you.
Okay. Then we'll have the mayor stand. And I'll have you raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Michigan and that you will faithfully discharge the duties of the Office of Mayor of the City of South Haven, Michigan, according to the best of your ability?
I do.
Okay.
All right. And with that, I'll call the meeting in order. And now if you'll join me for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America to the republic which stands one nation under God indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call. Travis.
Jeff Arnold.
Here.
Chris Campbell.
Here.
Joe Reiser.
Here.
Steve Schlock.
Here.
George Sleeper.
Here.
Letitia Wilkins.
Here.
Scott Smith.
Here. And next we have the approval of the agenda.
I make a motion to approve the agenda.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post no, it is approved. Next we have the consent agenda items A through I.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda items A through I.
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second to approve. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Arnold.
Yes.
Campbell.
Yes.
Reiser.
Yes.
Schlock.
Yes.
Sleeper.
Yes.
Wilkins.
Yes.
Smith.
Yes. That will take us to old business. City Council will be asked to take the following actions on the proposed amendment to Chapter Six of the City Code on the Keeping of Animals. And first, we need to hold a public hearing. Why don't we open it, and then I'll have Brian get us where we're at. How's that sound?
Make a motion to open the public hearing.
Second.
Motion and second, open a public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
It is open. Brian, fill us in.
Members of the council, at your last meeting in 2019, there was an effort to move as quickly as possible to allow for the joint session between the City Council and the Local Development Finance Authority to review the strategic plan for economic development. At the last meeting, the animal ordinance was set for a final consideration. At least one member of council had questions that needed to be addressed. The council opted to table the issue to allow the proper time to discuss it. Between myself, Kate, and Nick, we're here tonight to try and walk you through what the ordinance does and does not do, and answer any questions that the council may have. With that said, would it help to just offer a summary of...
Yep, what it is. Kate?
Sure. This was reviewed at the Planning Commission at two of their meetings. One, kind of looking at other ordinances around the state and what were the best practices, and then two, crafting the ordinance as you see before you. What we tried to do is, is kind of talk about the different livestock that could be used, could be housed in our community that are seen around the, around the state. Some of, some of that are reptiles, but also dove coats. There's lots of people who do racing pigeons, pygmy goats, and then pot-bellied pigs. So what we did is we set them out and specified the limits for animals based on square footage of a lot, and, and of course, addressing on how frequently they should be cleaned up. Of course, if you have 25 birds, you should be cleaning up more often than if you have like one pot-bellied pig. But dogs and cats or domesticated animals, there's no limit on those. And what we tried to do is just kind of clean it up. Currently, you have to go seek Health Department review, and Health Department is not reviewing those. So we just try to take that quotient out and clean up a very, very easy ordinance for people to look at.
So just to back up, we've had our live animal ordinance on the books for a number of years. One of the provisions that's built into the existing ordinance is that the Van Barren County Health Department has to provide a review. What we've seen over the last several years is the Health Department does not have staff that provides that review. When we've asked both in email and in writing, is that unfortunately, they don't provide that service from a staff's perspective. The ordinance as it currently sits is ineffective in that it does require a review from an agency that does not provide that review. As a result, we tried to put together what was generally viewed as best management practices, brought the ordinance to the Planning Commission. Planning Commission ultimately agreed that what is laid out is sensible and can be handled at the local level.
Okay. Why don't we listen to, see if there's any public comments, and then we'll see if that'll spur on a few more questions up here. So this is the time when we are here to listen to the public on this topic. So if anyone would like to come on up and discuss the issue, come on up. Seeing none, going once. And if you're going to come on up, please just state your name and address, and you'll only have up to five minutes.
Can you point out about the language under the pigs that I emailed you about?
Yeah, I believe we've already corrected that.
It wasn't corrected in here. Hi, I'm Mary Lynn Boogie. I live at 70 Gabriel Drive. I'd like to just talk to you regarding this ordinance. Most of the lots in South Haven are small. They're 50 feet wide. And what this is proposing is to allow animals that are not commonly kept within your house. It's not like a dog or a cat that can be brought in. It's rather something that's going to be in your yard. And they have excrement, which is smelly. They make noise. And as I said, it's not like calling up and saying, "Your dog is barking, please bring it in the house." And I have a concern regarding that in relation to the size of the property. I'd also like to point out that most of the things that are listed there say that the building that these things would be housed in, that these animals would be housed in, could be within eight feet of your property line. I suggest that that's very close to your property line because the person next door to you might not quite enjoy the animals as much as you do. Another thing is very often, these kind of animals, they're very attractive, they're cute, we all like to see them. I love to pet goats. But people tire of them because they require a lot of care. Listed in here, and several things, items are how many times you have to clean out your chicken coop a week, or how many times you need to do something else about taking care of the, the excrement which will cause odors so many times a week. And quite truthfully, that's unenforceable. The city's not going to know whether it's done once a week, twice a week, or not done until the next week or two weeks later. So it's, it's really an unenforceable part of it. Thirdly, when it comes to the pigs, it really doesn't even suggest that you clean it up so many times. It just says dispose of it properly. Well, first you have to clean it up, and your neighbor, that's not even a requirement to keep it clean. Finally, it doesn't really restrict, this is not an either-or type of thing. It's not you may have some rabbits, or you may have a pig, or you may have two goats. So essentially, my neighbor next to me could have two rabbits, 25 pigeons or doves, six fowl, two goats, one pig, and five honeybee skeeps adjacent to my property. Honestly, I think it's lovely to visit farms, but I chose to live in an area that has properties close together. If I wanted to be next to a farm, I would be next to a farm. And lastly, should you consider this, I believe that there needs to be a correction. Under the pigs, it actually states that if a pig is housed in an outdoor structure, the structure cannot be more than 20 feet from any principal structure on the parcel or any adjacent parcel. Now, in my opinion, it would be a good idea to keep all these animals within 20 feet of your house, of the person that owns it, but it certainly would not be a good idea to keep it within 20 feet of the house adjacent to, on the adjacent property. So I hope that would be corrected. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
I guess I have a couple of questions. From what Brian was saying, we already have, we already do allow...
Yes.
...these animals in the city, except the fact that we didn't do it because we didn't have anybody to, to inspect it or whatever.
No, we've, we've processed a number of these applications. The difficulty in processing these applications is, one of the specific provisions in the ordinance is not a service that's provided by the county health department.
Okay. So currently, on our books, we already do allow pigs and goats on, on property?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I didn't, I, who knew?
Domesticated pigs.
Who knew that? I guess I would also, I'm not in favor of this, but I mean, I, I do wonder, as Mary Lynn, as the previous person was saying, how we are going to really monitor this. And, and many times, we seem to put regulations down, but we don't seem to ever have the wherewithal and the, and the personnel to monitor and, and enforce some of these things. And I guess that would be certainly one of my... I'm also curious, since Brian just said you have a lot of applications for this already...
I didn't say that.
Oh, I thought you said we've had applications.
I've said we've processed numerous.
Oh, okay, you have, in the past.
In the past.
Okay. So I guess I'm not in favor of this, but again, I think the monitoring, as a resident, I don't think I should have to monitor my neighbor's property. That if, if they do have this, permitted to do this, then the city should have to monitor and, and enforce all the regulations. And as soon as it became bothersome to me as a resident in a neighborhood, there should be some way to rectify the situation.
Sheriff Wilkins, 811 Indiana Street. I kind of want to piggyback on what was just said. What is the recourse if, as a resident, if you had some, your neighbor that had these animals and it became a nuisance to you? What, what would be the recourse?
Nick?
If specific provisions of the ordinance are being violated, it could be dealt with in the manner that any ordinance can be dealt with. There could be a citation can be issued and be taken to court and join enforcement. One thing this ordinance does, the current ordinance doesn't, is it has specific regulations for each animal. The current ordinance, the process is, comes to the city council for individual approval, and these types of conditions don't exist in the, in the current ordinance. So this would be kind of increasing the ability to enforce nuisance-type provisions because there's specific things laid out in the ordinance.
Yeah. I am not in support of this because I think that if times get harder for people, that they could resort to livestock and things like that, and pigs and stuff. You might start getting more applications. And I think that you would see it more in the south side of Ward One. And I'm just afraid of that happening, especially as a homeowner, a property owner. I would hate to have a bunch, have neighbors with a lot of these animals around that bring the value of your home down. So, you know, I'm just looking ahead that if times get rough, you may start seeing a lot of applications, and people start growing their own. So I am totally against this ordinance.
Thank you. You want to clarify? I think I know where you're going.
Go ahead, Brian.
No, no, please.
Danielle Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. And I'll start out by saying I am in favor of this ordinance. When I lived in Grand Rapids years ago, there was a huge controversy over the people wanting to have chickens in their yard, and they made sure no roosters. Turned out that most neighbors were not even aware that someone had chickens. Chickens are very quiet. To address Joe's concern about people having a lot of these animals as perhaps a means to feed their families, the truth of the matter is to feed wild stock costs a lot of money. I would love to have chickens, but I would lose money by feeding them just to get a half a dozen eggs a week. I couldn't afford to do it. So it's not like people are going to get them and go, "Oh gee whiz, I, my family can have bacon for a year." The cost of feeding that pig would more than offset any bacon, ham, or whatever that they got from it. So, and then I had a question. I did read the ordinance, but obviously not very carefully. Is there a minimum square footage set aside per animal? Nick?
I don't believe that, that is in here.
Because organically, humanely, that would be a concern. If you've now got somebody with 30 chickens in a five-foot chicken coop, you've violated any humane manner of keeping them. So you may want to look into minimum square footage per animal, which would take care of somebody having two goats, 12 hens, three pigs, whatever. Just a suggestion. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
The correction, on chickens, there actually is minimum run size per fowl is eight square feet. So that, that is in there.
My name is Dan Williamson. I live south of town in the township at 20001 Lake Shore Drive. And I'm sitting here listening, and I look at, one of the city's number-one missions, given the plan that was released, is how to encourage families, companies, and people to move to South Haven year-round. And I, I'm not sure that if you're starting to put livestock into the city is going to help encourage businesses and families to move here, as opposed to keeping them outside of the city, into the township where there's more space and they could hopefully raise livestock and benefit from them, because my perspective is, I would not come to South Haven if I was going to have livestock next to me. So my recommendation is that this is declined and keep livestock out of the city. Thank you.
Thanks. You want to just, I know where you're going to go, so go there.
Yeah, so I'll actually follow up on that. We do have a local business that was a unique application that appeared before the city council. Edgeworks has two goats on site at their industrial business, was something that was a bit of a hobby by the business owner, and they were, I think they would agree that they were over the moon that the council approved it. Each time we've visited the, the business, they've been thrilled to remind us about how much they've enjoyed having the goats on site. Now, with that story complete, the thing that we're, we're trying to encourage the council to recognize is not that this ordinance is allowing something. This ordinance is simply trying to manage something the city has allowed for decades. This is a situation where it's not that you're allowing, it is that you're better managing. The city has permitted live animals to be on city property for decades. What is pushing this is we have an ordinance on the books that is generally viewed as ineffective. It's an ordinance that states that before we can bring forward an application to the city council for consideration, the Health Department has to review. The Health Department for the last two years has said we don't provide that service. As a result, we have a local business that provides free chicks to anyone who comes in to buy whatever type of feed you need. And we have found at least two current city residents who have received those chicks and are in a gray area. We cannot process their applications to keep them because we cannot complete the application. That is just a situation that comes off the top of my head, but that is a good example of a situation that we're facing. We, we have people who are keeping these, these animals on their property, and we have an ordinance that we cannot effectively administer. Should the council wish to modify this, that's fine. Should the council wish to take greater steps to restrict, that's fine. But as staff, we're telling you, something does need to be done because you can't continue to operate with an ineffective ordinance.
I think that's helpful. And I just, as I was reading this, I mean, to your point, I was surprised at some of the things that we already allow, and so I think it's, it's enforcement for the first time that we can't do. So I don't think we're going to have a rush on livestock and whatnot as a result of creating better enforcement tools. So...
To follow up on a further statement about enforcement, are we going to be able to make everyone's experience every day at their home perfect? No. Are we going to enforce where there's obvious violation of the rules? Absolutely. Between myself and Kate, we've worked with Attorney Manning to actively prosecute people that are in violation of loose animals, to the point that we've actually forced local residents to pay court costs, to pay vet bills for, for other animals that were harmed when their own animal got loose. We have taken active enforcement. It may not meet everyone's expectation, but it is something that we do take seriously.
That's perfect. I guess, any other public comments at this time that we can council talk?
David Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard. To Dan's point, I'd just like to say that I would be more willing to move to a community that did allow these animals to be on someone's property. And as my wife was saying, we lived in Grand Rapids. When this ordinance was, was passed, there was not like this huge rush. In fact, I don't, I wasn't aware of anyone in our immediate neighborhood that immediately had animals. They may have, but if they did, I didn't know it. There were a couple of places, but, you know, as we drove around, we saw, you know, eggs for sale. And that's one of the things that we have pursued for 20 years, is buying local eggs. So to us, that would be an advantage to have someone right in the neighborhood that we could buy eggs from. And also, I think to Brian's point, this, this can be an experimental period. I mean, this can always be revisited by the council in six months or a year as, as things come up. It doesn't, I don't think this has to be looked at as a one-time fix that, you know, this is going to be it, and it's never going to change. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Anybody else? All right. I want a motion to close the public hearing.
I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll second.
Motion second to close the public hearing. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are closed. All right. We have a mo, or now we need to consider a motion to adopt it, and I guess, well, we have another discussion before we have a motion? Any other comments or questions?
Yeah, just that I have had a lot of friends and a lot of people in different communities. Even my, example, my sister-in-law, they would raise a duck, you know? And a lot of people that have young kids, I have a one-and-a-half-year-old, a three-year-old, and a 16-year-old. But the kids, it's a great thing for the kids. I mean, my little daughter loves ducks. Give her a puppy, she doesn't care. Give her a duck, she's over the moon. So just information.
That's good. Any others, any others, questions? You got some questions?
Yeah, just a little tidbit. For my two cents, I know we're talking about waterfall and things of that nature as well. It has nothing to do with this ordinance, but kind of involved. But I would really like to see possibly in the future, some type of dealing with the goose and the geese population in town. So it kind of runs with this, and maybe it can tag along with it, tag onto it. Our streets and our sidewalks are just getting terribly messed up with that, so sorry to confuse the issue, I guess.
No, it's, I've seen it. Anything else? All right. Again, to the, as Brian said a couple of times, this is a way for us to better enforce, so I think it's a good time to put it on the books. Anybody care to make a motion?
What do we put on the book?
I'll make a motion to amend to Chapter Six of the City Code on Keeping of Animals.
There was a typo noted by a member of the public, and we have record of where that is. It has to do with the setback. You just say subject to the correction noted. You just say subject to the correction noted in public comments.
Okay. Subject to the correction noted.
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve or to adopt the proposed ordinance, subject to the comments made tonight. Thank you for that catch. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
No?
One.
You have one? Okay. And it passes. We have new business. City Council will be asked to select a mayor pro tem. Just need a motion.
I'll make, do you need a motion to select or do you need a... Okay. I'll make a motion to select a mayor pro tem.
Second.
I'll throw out a name for it.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'll make a motion to select a mayor pro tem of Jeff Arnold.
Second.
All right. Motion and second to select Mr. Jeff Arnold, mayor pro tem. Is there any discussion? Do you accept?
I do, yeah.
Accept. All right, we have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post no, very good. All right. City Council will be asked to consider approval of special event 2019-30, South Haven Steel Hitters Fishing Tournament 2020, to be held from 5:30 a.m. on May the 15th, 2020, until 6:00 p.m. on May the 17th, 2020, at the South Side Municipal Marina.
I'll make a motion to approve special event 2019-30, the South Haven Steel Hitters Fishing Tournament 2020.
Second.
Motion and a second. Anybody here?
Mr. Bard is here.
Oh, come on up. Would you like to share any words about it?
Sure.
Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Let me just state your name and who you are.
Yeah, I'm Captain Chad Bard, tournament director of our major pro-am tournament. It's basically our biggest tournament out of the port of South Haven every year. We have pretty much 60, 70 boats that come and fish the tournament, pro and amateur boats. They come from all over the state, come from all over the lake, come from Indiana, Illinois, come fish the tournament. It's at the time of the year before our busy time, before tourism season, before tourist season. And so it brings a lot of people in right before it starts to get busy. So it's a great thing for the city. It's, you know, we give away basically $30,000 to $40,000 worth of cash and prizes every year. And on behalf of the South Haven Steel Hitters, you know, we'd just like to thank the city and the city staff for allowing us to host this event at the South Side City Marina, which I think we've done for the past 30-some years. So I'd just like to say thank you for allowing us to do that.
And Captain Bard, all the fish that you catch?
Yeah, all the fish that we catch, we make everybody donate at least for the first day till we get enough fish. day till we get enough fish, and then we donate that, well, some of it on the Friday tournament gets donated to the Michigan Maritime Museum for their fundraiser. And then, and then also, we donate the fish to the South Haven Steel headers organization for their major fundraiser, which is the Fish Boil at the Blueberry Fest. So it kind of works both ways.
Do you have a Plan B?
Plan B?
Meaning if just in case our docks are underwater, do you have a Plan B for that tournament?
Yeah, Plan B is, really, there is no Plan B. Because the problem is that if South Haven Municipal Marina docks go underwater, pretty much everything else is underwater also. So basically, we just have to realize the fact that we may not have power there. Because if it gets to a certain level, then they have to turn off the power. So the fishermen, they'll just have to, you know, and I'm sure that financially and things like that, if that does happen, then Kate will probably work with us, you know, if they don't have power for that time being.
So the Steel headers would be perfectly willing to work with staff, cancel using the marina if necessary, or working without power if necessary, directed based on staff's?
Yes, yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Very good. And well, and just thank you ahead of time for, we know it's a ton of work.
Yeah.
And this year to have to do contingency plan and all that's stressful, so we appreciate, it's a lot of effort, we know, and it does a lot of great for the community and/or our business owners are thrilled to have you show up that time of year.
Yep.
So thanks again for everything you do.
Yeah, thank you.
All right. Any public comments on this? All righty. Seeing none, we have a motion and a second to approve special event 2019-30, the South Haven Steel Header's Fishing Tournament. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? It is approved. Next, city council will be asked to attend a training session on the essentials of local government on Monday, January the 13th, from 6:00 p.m. until 9:00 p.m. in the council chambers. I think Brian just wanted, just to tell people we're going to be here next Monday.
Yeah, so members of council, you'll be asked to be back here from 6 to 9. Two years ago, Bill Mathewsen from the Michigan Municipal League came in and offered a training to council. Some of this will be a rehash for some of you. It should be a lot of good information. They're going to cover everything from Freedom of Information Act to Open Meetings Act. And then just also go into, we're hoping to get some details on economic development, housing development, and then also league services. It'll move relatively quickly, so just be ready. We have notified our boards and commissions about the training, and then we've also notified the Housing Commission. So I would anticipate a fairly busy room, and Mr. Mathewsen's aware of that. We'll have the session recorded, so anyone who's interested can go back and watch it.
Very good, thank you. All right. See you next Monday. Next, city council will be asked to consider and discuss the draft ordinance amendment, which addresses residential driveway widths. And again, if council's interested in pursuing the proposed amendments, we need to consider a motion to ask the planning commission to hold a public hearing on the proposal. So I guess, Brian, Kate, you want to kind of give us the skinny on why we're back here?
Yeah, so I'll start, and then I'll have Kate and Nick walk you through this. But put simply, the driveway width ordinance has been in front of the city council, the planning commission, the zoning board of appeals, and through those three boards, we're just not seeing a solid direction on where any of the boards would like to go next. We've had a variance denied for a driveway width that would have been greater than the permitted allowance. The city council then approved an agreement allowing that driveway to be built at essentially a 20-foot width, with the understanding that if the ordinance is not amended, that that property owner would then have to shrink the driveway, have to cut it and repour to a smaller width. Along the way, the planning commission began to review the issue, and ultimately, we just didn't get a real solid recommendation coming from planning commission. What council's being asked to do is just offer guidance to the planning commission on what you're hoping to see, and then staff will work with the PC to get that consideration made and bring it back to council. Now that's a lot in 30 seconds. Nick, Kate, is there anything you'd like to add?
The specific proposal, there's a red line included in the packet, and it's very minor text changes. Essentially, the 16-foot that's currently in there would be, this proposal would change that to 21. And there's some language, currently, the, so the 20, the 16 or 20-foot is based on right at the property line. The current ordinance allows it to go up to 1.5 times that within the right-of-way itself, where the, basically where the driveway connects to the road. There's language in here to make sure that that is not expanded any further than it currently is. It would now be either limited to 1.5 times the driveway width, or for driveways that are wider than 16 feet, they would be capped at a maximum of 24, which is what the 1.5 times 16 turns into anyway. So it would not be increasing the permitted width in the right-of-way itself, only at the property line. You'd be going from 16 to 21. And that's, that's this proposal. It would bring a fairly large number of driveways in the city that over the years have been built, not in conformance with the 16-foot ordinance, would bring the overwhelming majority of those into conformance, which is where the 21-foot width came from.
So members of council, what you're looking at is, this would be the first step. Planning commission would have to go through their consideration. It would then come back to city council, at which time you would have a public hearing, then followed by final action. So at a minimum, you'll be seeing this two more times at the council level and at least once at the planning commission level.
And again, this brings several, I know in the report, there's several non-conforming ones. All right, so this brings several of them into compliance, which you said.
Correct. Based on the sample size, I don't have the exact numbers, but it's, most of the ones that were in the sample were beyond the 16 feet, were less than 21 feet.
Okay. I know when we met the last time on it, in looking at it, it makes sense to, as the red lines, as you discussed, makes sense to me. I guess I'd be curious, any other concerns from staff perspective? Kate, as far as?
Well, I think that when we took it to the planning commission, we were looking at, excuse me, 16, 18, and 20 feet. So 21 would be a new one for the planning commission to consider. Now, there is some variation between the different parts of the city, and they took that into consideration, but ultimately, they couldn't come to a decision that to go to 20, and they just felt that would be best to leave it alone. But this would be a new consideration for the planning commission.
Okay. I guess.
Kate or Nick, I don't know if either one of you might know this, but do you know where the original 16 feet came from? Was it some kind of standard at the time?
I think it was a standard, George. It was since 1983. I believe this provision of the zoning ordinance has been modified since 1983. I don't think anything has been modified in that specific 16-foot wide driveway. Since then, we've seen more houses have more stacking cars and such like that, but.
I think the trend toward two-car garages has been kind of a, also resulted in a trend toward wider driveways, just kind of nationwide. And if you look at older driveway ordinances, I think they tend to be narrow, or if you look at newer ones, they tend to be in the 20-foot range.
Okay. Good question. Any other thoughts? Senate along?
I'll make a motion to ask the planning commission to hold a public hearing on the proposal.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second to send it to planning commission. Is there any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? Let's get their input. Thank you. And next, city council will be asked to consider approval of a proposed amendment to the planned unit development for Everett Park Phase 1. I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the planned unit development for Everett Park Phase 1.
Second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Brian, or Kate?
Yeah, I'm going to defer to, so Kate and Nick have worked on this with our planning commission over the last couple of months. I'm not sure who wants to start.
I'll jump in. This will be the First Amendment sought for this planned unit development. This was originally known as Everett Park Phase 1. It's been bought by a new developer, and they've begun to build phasing, the Phase 1 single-family houses. Now, part of the original PUD plan of planned unit development plan called for eight duplexes, so four attached duplexes. What the developer's seeking, and the planning commission reviewed and approved, has recommended approval to this body, is that those eight duplexes be turned into four single-family residences. They will be in the same envelope. The only thing that's changing is here is the housing type.
Pretty straight ahead. And these, this happens with PUDs, so it's, they're going to change sometimes.
It does, and it's not going outside of the lot or the building envelope. It's just changing the housing types to two residences to one.
I'm glad it wasn't the other way around. That would have been harder, so. So, all right. Any public questions or comments before we get counsel comments?
So, I'm sorry, David Veenstra, 1220 Monroe Boulevard.
Thank you.
So is this going in the direction then of less affordable housing, since they will be single units rather than duplexes?
I don't believe this ever marketed itself as affordable housing. This has always been a luxury development. I can tell you that many of the houses are, I would say, between the $300,000 and $400,000 range. I'm not sure what price they wanted to set the duplexes as, as this is a new developer, and he's, he's only tied to the original planned unit development, because that's what was on the table when he took it over. So as to affordability, I really couldn't speak to that, because I don't think it was ever set up as an affordability issue.
This issue came up in the planning commission meeting as well, and the developer was there that evening and said that for this particular part of the PUD, this is what he wants to build immediately, and it just kind of made sense from a market perspective to do these as single-family homes. But there's denser housing called for in other parts of the PUD is what he said. I don't know the specifics of it, but I think it's already there, and he's planning to go forward with that, is my memory of what he said, so.
And just to follow up on the question of affordability, this is the first phase. It was a long-stalled residential development. I think it's got started right around 2006, and then largely bottomed out in 2008, 2009. The developer has met repeatedly with city staff, as well as Mr. Ryan Kilpatrick from Housing Next, just prior to the holidays. He's expressed what appears to be sincere interest in phases 2, 3, and 4, to try and partner with the city, to come up with some additional tools that he could benefit from in exchange for creating some more affordable housing stock. What that would be, I don't know. But we've engaged in those conversations, we've made clear that we're willing to consider proposals, and that we're willing to consider a formal partnership to take his unused land and pursue a mix of market-rate affordable and even senior housing. But that's all quite a ways down the road, and unfortunately, I just can't give you any details, because the details have not yet been fleshed out.
That's a good answer, yeah. We, numerous times, we'd love to have developers purchase and build lower-priced homes. I can't, we've, we asked them point-blank, and, good answer. I mean, it's, this is where they're going to start, and hopefully they'll get to the point where they can build some at a lower price point, which would be fantastic.
And just to continue that statement, it's, it's a city block. That's how big the overall development is, and it's just that first corner that actually has utilities, water main, sanitary sewer, storm sewer, streets, sidewalks, et cetera. As you look to the remainder of Everett Park or trailside by the park, as it's now being marketed, you've got wide-open green space, but there still needs to be remediation done from environmental concerns. There still has to be a road built, utilities built, and the developers made very clear to myself, to me, to Nick, to Kate, that he wants to come to the table, because all of those utility items are going to cost money, and he's going to pursue every tool available to him. And he's stated that he's interested in pursuing some of the community's needs for market-rate and affordable. But for tonight, you're only being asked to look at that first phase at a modification to the PUD.
Perfect, thank you. All right. Any other counsel comments on this one? Nope. Just glad they're still building homes, so I'm just saying thanks for that. We have a motion and a second to approve the proposed amendment to the PUD for Everett Park Phase 1. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? It's approved. Next item, city council will be asked to consider approval of a proposed amendment to the planned unit development for Island Harbor condominium.
I'll make a motion to approve the proposed amendment to the planned unit development for Island Harbor condominium.
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion and a second. Who wants it?
I'll get it again.
Yeah.
Island Harbor planned unit development is a very small planned unit development. There's only a certain number of lots. What we have here is that one of the owners of a lot wants to just sell out, and so he's contacted three of the owners that abut his property, and each one of them want to have a portion of that added to their own lot. While this would normally just be a lot line adjustment on three fronts, what we're, what we're here doing today is because it's a planned unit development, we have to modify the planned unit development. So what it is, is it's taking instead of three, so one lot will be dispersed amongst the other three lots, and that's all that's being asked. You're going from a four-unit development to a three-unit development.
Very good.
Is there any TIF money that's involved in any of that, or makes it confusing, or?
So Island Harbor would have sat in DDA 2. I believe that it was removed as part of the carve-out.
I think in 2017 it was out, Brian.
Yeah, but either way, it's all private road. I can't think of any way that TIF would have impacted that site, unless at one point they had a brownfield plan back in the early 2000s.
It's not a brownfield plan though.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Anybody want to? Do we have a motion and a second?
You've already got a motion on the floor.
Oh, good. Any other comments, questions, comment? Public comments? Nothing. Counsel comments? Nothing. We have a motion and a second to approve the proposed amendment to the PUD for Island Harbor condominium. So all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? No? It's approved. All right, we are now at that time when citizens of the audience can heard, be heard on items not on the agenda. And if you'd like to come on up, just state your name and address, and you have up to five minutes to share your comments. Ms. Gail, Happy New Year.
Happy New Year. Gail Patterson Gladney, and on 914 Calmazoo Street, your Banbury County Commissioner for District 1. I just wanted to make sure that all of you who were here when a question was asked about the, two of the millages that are going to be coming on the March 10th ballot could understand what was, what is being proposed. The road commission renewal request for .9769 mills have been previously approved by electors. So that's, has been on the books, and it expires in 2019. And the revenue will fund maintenance, repair, and reconstruction of public roads for a four-year period. The second ballot proposal is a public transit millage renewal proposal for .2471 mills, and it had been previously approved by the voters, and that also expired last year. The request is for a four-year renewal, and that would expire in 2023. So the question about was, since these ended in 2019, will the county not be able to get the money that they needed from these millages, because it's going to be on the ballot in March 10th, 2020? And so I talked to John Fall, who's the county administrator, and he said there will be no loss of money that's taken in by the county. In fact, there's three chances before the building would go out for those millages. So even though expires in 2019, we're, everything is as it should be, so. Do you have any questions about that? No? Okay. Then, I just wanted to let you know that following a positive evaluation by the Board of Commissioners, we approved a three-year extension of John Fall's employment contract, so he's our, still are going to be our county administrator. And then I just wanted to mention about the land bank authority. Over the years, I've had lots of questions about if the county had a land bank authority, and other people have asked me about that. And so the commissioners have just approved the appointment of Cindy Compton, Dan Paul DeYoung, Matthew Newton, and Zach Morris to the land bank authority. DeYoung, Matthew Newton, and Zach Morris to the land bank authority board. And the county treasurer completes the five-person board. So, that's going to be in effect. Are there any questions? No? Okay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thanks, Gail. Anybody else? Come on.
I'm Jeffrey Dick, 359 Pearl Street.
And I'm Rosalie Placati, 559 Monroe Boulevard.
And we're here tonight to support the material that you have on a South Haven nondiscrimination ordinance as it pertains to sexual orientation and gender identity. And we look forward to being back here in two weeks to make a presentation on that ordinance and some background information that we hope you'll have received and be able to review before then. We're looking forward to that time of sharing with you.
Thank you very much.
And if I could just stay up here. I'm still Rosalie. I'm here to invite you, the public and the people that are watching, the hundreds and thousands of people that are watching, to invite you on behalf of the refreshed South Haven Diversity Coalition to the Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. luncheon and program. It will be held on January 20th from 11:30 to 1:00. We have a wonderful lunch and program planned. We're actually, Jeffrey and I are working on this as well together, that you might see a little bit different. We're challenging the community while they attend to bring laundry detergent. And I know that might sound like a, kind of a weird request, but our personal care pantries are the hardest hit, and they're also the hardest to keep supplied. And laundry detergent is very expensive, and it's not covered by any kind of bridge card or any kind of cash assistance. So, we're actually having kind of a contest with organizations. If you're part of an organization, if you want to attend, please bring laundry detergent. I brought some flyers, and I truly hope to see you there.
Where?
Oh, it's at the high school. And, and yeah, and a shout-out to the high school. Once again, they've been amazingly generous. They are not only providing the space, but the staff and the luncheon. And it's a sit-down lunch this time. So, it'll be very, very nice.
Very nice.
So, thank you.
Thank you for the update. Anybody else? Going once, going twice? So, DPW Director's Report. Is Bill here? Good evening. Happy New Year. I guess I get 'em all.
Good evening, Your Honor, City Council. Here's an update from the Department of Public Works. Splash pad, nothing new to report. It's, you're gonna see, probably see a lot pick up as the springtime goes, but unfortunately, right now, they're, just did the removals and what you're looking at right now. Probably, maybe when we get closer to maybe March, we'll be able to do the, the connection in the road, get that done before the season picks up, and then have the road ready to asphalt. So, as soon as we open up the South Beach Park lot, we can and not have that interrupted. Center Street, we, tailgate talks have been suspended till further notice. However, I do have an update for City Council. They did start removals of the sidewalk on Center Street, starting from Michigan, heading north. And I'm talking about just Center Street from, let's say, from Phoenix to Michigan. They're gonna be removing the east, the east side, and that's just due to get some conduit in for the streetlights. Good news is, we want to start doing the paving part. That means the road, put the road in. We're hoping Wednesday or Thursday, weather-dependent. So, that'll be, that'll be huge. They're talking about both sides.
Wow.
So, we'll have pavement in. And if the weather does cooperate, and we have these conditions, there's a possibility we can still then continue with curb. And everything is just weather-dependent. But the contractor's been very flexible and just, just tell everybody that lives there just to bear with us, unfortunately. I really didn't want to do the sidewalk. I've been telling everybody, we didn't want to tear the sidewalks out, typically did the roads, but there's just an opportunity to have that electrical contractor in and get this taken care of. So, we did get notices out to the businesses, and we made sure that some of the, we actually knocked on the doors as well. So, everybody should be aware of it, but I'll keep City Council informed. South Beach, the outfall, we're still waiting for the springtime to get that repaired. Probably told last week when we had those rains that built up like a lake there, well, that's because that outfall's not working, and that's what it's gonna do. It's gonna act like a sand filter and then slowly filter through. Dumpster enclosure and Water Street is finished with the exception of the fence and that screening around it, and that'll happen in the spring. We're working, expecting a design from GMP soon on the building, and then the storage and a proposal from them on the feasibility study for the DPW site. Working with property owners on erosion, that's just something that happens. We've been doing that, so several properties. Water and Sewer Hydro Corp, they're continually doing cross-connection inspections. That's gonna, it's a normal thing. It's going to happen. If anybody wants to know what a cross-connection inspection is, tell them to give me a call. Be happy to go over it with me, or if they have any questions on the letters. We field a lot of those. The, our, our water system material inventory to Eagle was submitted on time. So, we fulfilled our requirement for the Safe Water Drinking Act for lead and copper rule. With that, submitting that material inventory is letters will be going out to all the services that are galvanized. With the changes to the Safe Water Drinking Act that happened two years ago with Part 14 of the lead and copper rule, galvanized services are now considered lead services. So, I have to inform everybody. So, if you get a letter in the mail, it's just informing you what we have to per the law. Nothing has changed. I'm not asking to change anything, but there are precautions that you can take if, if there's something that you worry about. We did have testing that was done just this, just this last month, and we did 40 samples at 20 sites, non-detect for lead. So, our water is very neutral. It's not acidic. So, and this lead that we're talking about, it's, it's called a lead goose neck, and it's off of main. And it's a piece of lead that's probably about 18 inches. It's a transition that they use to tie into galvanized, just to make a flexible loop. It was done in the 60s and the 50s. Anytime they did new services, that's what they did. That was the standard. In this municipality, we just did the goose neck. Grand Rapids, they had lead services that went in from the main all the way into the property and into the house. That used to be the old lead service. Does that, to me, define a service? But with the changes to the new law, galvanized services are now considered that because there is lead in there. But as I stated, we had samples done, 40 samples taken, non-detect. So, we're working right now with the, our bond consultants, and we're working on a special meeting for Shausa. Right now, we have two bond agreements and resolutions that are going in front of South Haven Township and Casco Township for refinancing of a bond that will save Casco and South Haven Township and an overall refinancing of the bond of $2.11 million. That's huge. We have to do some rigmarole. We have to do a special meeting. We actually have to do a meeting, have to form an old authority back together to have a meeting to approve this and then disband it. So, but it's, it's worth it in the end, just to save that amount of money. We are working with United Financial Solutions for our water and sewer rates. We're looking at the rates. We're doing a deep study on it. We're looking at our five-year plans, 20-year plans on both water and sewer. And also, what we're looking at is our availability fees. So, all of our costs. A lot of feedback that we get from developers is the cost of our connection fees, cost of our availability fees. This is a company that, that's all they do. They look at water and sewer rates, period. They do this around the whole nation. So, they're looking at it. I gave them all of our audits. So, I'm hoping for, when it be something that gets back, something concrete, and maybe some changes, but it's gonna have to go in front of the Shausa board. Staff is working on the budget coming for fiscal year 2021. Yes, we start work on it at this time. Get an early start on it. And we did receive notification from the Land and Water Sewer Conservation Fund that the Kids Corner, we received a grant for it. So, that's $275,000 matching to replace that. So, overall, we had an estimated budget of $550,000. So, that's good. And we're gonna start getting a consultant on board to, and of course, go through the process. There'll be a lot of public input, a lot of public meetings, but this is good news. Does City Council have any questions for me on any DPW projects or anything in the report? Yes, Joe?
Just wanna thank you for Superior Street pouring the sidewalks. We had a couple residents concerned about it. You also did Monroe Street, which looks great. And the summary you did, Monroe Boulevard and Erie Street, that corner, you took out the tree. Big, big improvement. So, the sidewalks really good, look good that you've done, especially under the conditions of the weather today. Donum, thank you.
Thank you. Pass it on to staff.
Just encouraged to see pavement on Center Street. That's good news. So...
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. All right, Mr. Desette?
Sorry. Just a few things to run through. Just a thank you to the CVB, their team, and even our Public Works team for all of the efforts at the New Year's Eve party. Chief Thompson and her officers were walking the Phoenix Street throughout the entire evening, and it was cold. I talked to her several times, and it was cold. With regards to Chief Thompson, she and I met this morning. We're planning to bring the narcotics millage up to the City Council. It'll be at your first meeting in February. That'll be just an update on what we do with a narcotics millage, and then hoping to get it on to an upcoming ballot. That will expire in 2021. So, wanna give ourselves lots of spare time to work on it. For, in front of each of you is the new economic development brochure that our local development finance authority has been working on over the last year. So, Deb Davidson, Kate Hosier, Tom Renner, all spent a lot of time working on this. They also got...
Kathy Wagman.
Thank you. Kathy from the Chamber of Commerce. So, this is a brochure that'll be up on the city's website and is in a digital format. And then, the hard copies will be used every time we're going out and talking with local businesses, shared with the CVB, shared with the Chamber, just to get information out to new businesses as well as part-of-site retention. SHAZH's hiring committee continues to work. Chief Wise is really, really serious. He is going to retire. So, the committee's been working over the last several months, and it's a diverse committee. It's made up of city staff, SHAZH's staff, our elected sheriff, and even people from the faith community. So, really diverse group, and I believe that they'll be meeting tomorrow afternoon to begin finalizing the list for who will be interviewed and how we go forward. High water report. So, we have shared a variety of documents with Senator Nesbit, with Van Buren County Econo, or I'm sorry, Emergency, oh, the Bob Kirk from Emergency Management. We've also shared information with Congressman Upton's office, just trying to shake all of the trees. We are hoping that State of Michigan will issue a disaster declaration. It sounds a little odd to say that you hope for that. The benefit to the City of South Haven would be, for some of these public costs, it could open up a pool of funding for potential repair of Dunkley, potential repair of North Shore Drive, potential repair of, of our marinas, and on and on. The high water report that we've put together was picked up by the Michigan Municipal League and shared today with the Associated Press. So, you may see South Haven pop up in some of the larger media sites over the next couple of days. What we're planning to do is, either at the second meeting in January, first meeting in February, we'll spend a significant amount of time walking you through that report and just making sure the council fully understands how big the issue is. And this was actually suggested by Steve. I think it's a really good idea just to spend 20, 30 minutes walking you through the report and then making sure that the public's aware of just how big the, the situation is. Mr. Mayor, that's, that's everything I've got for tonight.
Sounds good. Thank you. Any questions, Mr. Desette? Thank you. Council comments? Joe, start with you. Happy New Year.
I would like to thank Pastor Dick and Rosalie for all the documents and all the hard work they put into it and all the residents behind them for the benefit of others who they care about. I think I read one time, if we don't protect the rights of others, someday our own rights could be at risk. So, I think the issue of the LGBTQ goes beyond that group. So, I want to thank them for their time and effort.
I just want to echo what Brian was saying. I attended the New Year's celebration. I want to thank everyone that, that helped pull that off, especially the law enforcement that helped keep the peace during there. I did see Chief Thompson walking around, and she did look cold, yeah. I would also like to welcome Jeff to City Council.
No comment tonight.
Just thanks to all the people of War Two that voted for me. I'm happy to be back on City Council, and Happy New Year to everyone.
Welcome back, Jeff. Happy New Year. And I also celebrated the New Year's Eve at downtown, and it was great. Thank you.
I don't have a comment. All right, very good. Well, welcome, Jeff. Great to have you here. Thank you for keeping an eye on me on the left side. I appreciate it. I just want to thank everyone just for being here tonight, everyone that's listening, the hundreds of thousands, as Rosalie pointed out on the TV. It's, it's an honor to sit here. I just want to thank folks for your, your confidence. I want to say one thanks to my family who put up with me being here on occasion and not at home. So, I also just want to say this, this group has taken on some very hard issues and, you know, really kind of faced it. And we've, we've given up some games and some dinners and some time with family to be here. So, for that, I'm very appreciative of everybody sitting up here. It was nice to read the paper this weekend, if you're kind of curious, I mean, to see some of the stuff we've been doing. I just, you know, we just talked about Center Street, Splash Pad, building houses, not enough of the ones, affordable, and we know that, but again, it's on our radar. The Commercial Rehab District downtown, very encouraging because you're seeing apartments getting built. So, good stuff. And that's occurred with public input, and we appreciate people coming out here and talking to us, whether it's coming tonight, or emailing us, or calling us, or texting us, whatever. So, please keep coming. We appreciate that you're here. And related, that's the same. We have individuals that serve on boards and commissions, and they're out there taking your ideas and your inputs. So, for those that are serving, I thank for the public. We appreciate it. We're 150 years old this year, and we have some folks in this room that, yeah, we had a lot of volunteers. We had Rosa Lee, who's, yay, Rosa Lee, Tom Renner, Jerry Gruber, Scott Reiner, Kathy Wagman, and there's so many others that made it a success. We had the picnic in the park, and just a lot of good informations come out just to share our heritage, and there's still more coming out. So, I appreciate everyone that did that. And so, with that, we look forward. You know, we've just talked about it a second ago, housing. We, we have opportunity there. We know that. And we will continue to have it on our radar. It's, I mean, it's a discussion every day. I mean, I, today, I had a young lady in front of me at work, and I'm, it's, I'm like, how do I get you to my town? She's like, can't afford a house. I mean, it's, we're all, every day, all of us are facing it. So, we get it. So, we need to look at additional housing alternatives, different price points. Housing Commission, again, we have boards and commissions looking at it. We'll work with the township. It's on our radar. We have work. We know it's important. And it's critical to get, you know, workers obviously in town, keep families in town. So, when it comes to economic development, you've heard us talk a lot about that, the brochure, which is beautiful. It's always top of mind. We've got Jim Hettinger working with us. We drafted an economic development plan, which is a great start. And it covers so much. It's housing, again, it's, you know, population, all of it. So, we have to always continue to look at that. It's always gonna be important. We have to diversify our economy so it's more year-round. We know that. We met with businesses. We have Tom out here. We have, it's been fun having businesses come in. It's been fun getting out and talking to the business. And we have great, some neat businesses. And so, I mean, if you're ever curious, I mean, talk to a business owner. Tom, right? He's got great stories. Go visit him. You know, we, you know, lots of them. Lovejoy, Do-It, Spencer, Alomaro, Food Tools. I mean, we have new hospital getting built, great schools, right? Fiber Acoustics. Just, there's a lot of neat companies that build pretty cool things, and they employ a lot of people. And we respect that, and we're gonna continue to foster those relationships and help them grow and expand. And that's, that's critically important. Now, that said, we're always gonna be looking for new businesses. It's not, we're not content to have what we've got. We're always looking for more. We know we have industrial property we could develop. We have to market that, brochures and different things. We made a video, if you haven't seen our video, just in an attempt to get ourselves out there, to get to site selectors. We're also open to ideas. So, I hope if someone's sitting out there that says, why didn't they? So I hope if someone's sitting out there that says, why didn't they think of this? That they know, you know, our phone numbers are on utility bills? If you get one of those and if you don't, good for you. No, just kidding, we'll say. But anyway, it's always important. So, and I'll piggyback, you know, we have great schools. We have great teachers, we have great administrators and we should be, you know, bringing that to the forefront. And we are creating very talented young individuals, right? So, I mean, did anybody go to the collage concert this year? Collage concert? Okay, everyone should be raising your hand. What? If there's not a point of community pride, then go to the collage concert. I would challenge all of you to go next year. It is amazing. Hundreds of your young students are, you know, getting ready to just head into the world, but they're, it's remarkable.
It's hard to get a seat.
It's hard to get a seat. They have two shows. So anyway, there's such opportunity there. We have great schools. So, you know, one thing we have to work on and it's a concern both at school and the city level and that's declining population of our city and our schools. So we have to have that on our radar, everything we do, everything we're, as we look at stuff, we have to think of how to deal with population. How do we keep people here of all ages, right? We need technology to allow people to work from home. We need things for people to do to keep people active, engaged, including we have to look at recreation, arts, culture, all that good stuff. So that's all the stuff that we have to be looking at. I mean, we love it that people want to come here and work here, play here, but we gotta make them want to stay here, right? So there's where we have a little homework to do. LMC, we have a lot of opportunity. The campus, we would all love to see it be busier, no one more than myself or this council, the city staff. Help us, you know, we're looking for LMC to help us train our current workforce, create a workforce for tomorrow. We'd love to see some sort of a signature program out of our campus that would attract people here. We'd love to see more opportunity for the South Haven High School students and we'd love to see just more opportunities for adults in Richmond, you know? Classes going on at LMC, just activity out there. I would like to, you know, commend LMC, President Trevor Kabatsky, you know, for meeting with businesses with us. So they did go out and we, we met with businesses. We just need to act on some of the things those businesses told us. So with that, you know, it's all good stuff. We just need to see it improved. We'd love to see more opportunities to expand tourism, Kathy, you know, Scott Reiner, the Chamber, we need to all get together and just continues to look at that. It's a very important piece of our economic development puzzle. We should always have that on our, you know, radar. We have lots of natural resources. We have a lake that's causing us a little bit of trouble right now, but it's a great resource and we need to be, you know, at the table when it comes to those discussions about those water levels. So we're looking at that. We've got a great system of trails. We have some improvements coming at the Maritime Museum, All Seasons Marina property, so those will be some exciting changes. If you, you know, we have some great ravines, might need a little bit of cleaning up. We have a great downtown. So a lot of great things going on. I'd love to see us have a candid discussion in the next year about some sort of a visioning process. I think we've got, if you look at our economic development plan, you've got an infrastructure plan, but kind of that community vision, where do we want to be the next decade, two decades? Kind of linking things together. Calmazoo had a pretty deep process, so if you peek at theirs, I, we don't need to be quite that grand, but I think smaller scale, but similar in type. I think it'd be nice to just hear what our residents are thinking, what they see as the vision of our future. We all have our ideas, but nice to hear from everybody else. And part of that will require some joint meetings with South Haven Schools, South Haven Charter Township. So work to be done. So there's more to be done. So as we look back, we're grateful and we look forward, we're very optimistic for more good things to come. So I look forward to having everybody participate over the next year or two. So on that note, I appreciate everyone coming out tonight. We're gonna go into a closed session. So we're gonna turn off the TVs, close this part of the meeting. We're gonna go into closed session, then we'll come back out of there and adjourn. So right now.
I'll make a motion to go into closed session.
Second.
All right. Motion in a second to go into closed session. This is a roll call vote.
Campbell?
Yes.
Reiser?
Yes.
Schlock?
Yes.
Sleeper?
Yes.
Wilkins?
Yes.
Arnold?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes. Have a good night, everybody. Bye.